Okay. I call the meeting, the work session meeting on July 1st of your township to order.
Mears?
Yes.
Sam?
Yes.
Hartshorn?
Yes.
Okay, and our first topic is Trustee Hartshorn, topic of web content and development email usage.
Yes, so the new email addresses have been created. I'll be getting with everybody individually, except for email I've already set up Rhonda's, my own. So here's a list of email accounts along with some forwarding email accounts that I created as well. I do create email addresses for the road crew. Didn't know if they wanted them, but I created them, I can remove them really easy. I also created some forwarding email addresses that send, people can send an email to it and it distributes it out. For example, there's a cemeteries one that sends it to the road crew as well as to Karen and Rhonda. Just an example, I was kind of flying from the seat of my pants a little bit. There's a fiscal officer one that forwards to Rhonda, there's a zoning one that will forward Karen. And then I also created an information request one that sends it to all the trustees as well as Rhonda and Karen. So this is just me kind of taking a first swipe at it, I want to get input back, see what people thought, and how we want to proceed.
Does information request mean records request?
Yes.
Or if someone just needs-
And we can put the context of that on the website too, saying for all information requests, please send something to this email address.
Or if they just need the information, anything other than-
There's also there's a couple other ones too that aren't on here, one's a web admin, it's just for the web administration. And there's a social media one, which all the social media accounts are created with that email address. I've got the passwords for those, and what I'm going to do is I'm going to, basically they're 20-character complex passwords. I'll provide those, we'll lock those up here and keep them, I don't want to be the only person that has on me. I'm just the person that created them. That said, anybody have any questions on email?
Are these live now?
These are live. So what I'm doing is, I use Outlook, since I have multiple email providers and I kind of coordinate them there and I can archive them off and all sorts of stuff. I set up Rhonda's Monday. The key is, it depends on what client you want to use, I'll be able to help you set it up. And if you want to take a swipe on your own, I'll give you directions on how to do it. I did run into a hiccup with AOL that we're still trying to overcome access-wise. They told me I'm not on the acc- I'm not on the account. So I said, okay, well let me get with Rhonda and do that nail down, so I tried to call-
Is that what we got resolved to? Did we resolve that?
No, when I called them today, they told me I'm not on there. And then I realized that if I was on there, I need to have like my cell number on there, because I can't verify to a number that I'm not at. So if I, if I say, like if I log in, it says which number you want to verify to. I'm not getting those numbers. So if they call with automated call saying, you know, please verify, they would be like, what? Who's this? So just to make it more simple, the two things that I needed is one, my cell number added for the verification, and then also confirm that my name is on the account so that I can deal with tech support to overcome the issue that we were having with your ability to access the IMAP protocol to pull the AOL email addresses into Outlook so that we can archive those off.
Your name was on the account?
I know, they told me today it wasn't and I didn't want to ar- the guy basically told me that if he, if he even tried to help me, he'd get fired. And I said, let me get with Rhonda. I think it's probably going to be one of those things that I'm going to need to be in the room with Rhonda when it happens. And then as soon as she's done, say, okay, now we need to set up the IMAP and work through that. So that's something we can do next week, there's no rush on that. But for anybody else, if you have a home PC that you would want to use to archive off your emails and keep those stored, I can help you set those up. So that was it on the email. Now-
Hello?
Yes.
Hello?
Yes.
This is David Saylor.
Mr. Saylor, hello.
Hello.
Did you need something or you're just attending the meeting?
I'm supposed to be attending the meeting.
You are, you are in the meeting, sir, we all hear you?
Okay.
All right. The other part of what I wanted to go over was the web content. Now, you won't pull this up because I have, I might have to ask you guys to come this way. One at a time. I know, this is, this is what I got. Basically, I want to show you the website design, where it is today. Some of it's got data in it, some of it is just blank still because I don't know where we want to go with it. So...
I can't hear anyone.
Yeah, we're not talking. I'm basically loading the website, so it'll be one minute. I apologize, I was going to set this up before, but I don't have enough time. So what we can actually do is, we can go through the other items, we'll come back to the website at the end. That way I can load everything up and make it more screenable, so.
Okay, so this time we'll wait till Jason gets a little bit and we'll move on to our next one. And at the request of trustee Lynn, her first thing is the BZA, the BZA review.
Yeah, and I'm glad that Mr. Saylor is joining us because I have a couple questions from some things that I want to make sure I'm understanding and that I'm perceiving. Having only been here six months, I'm still trying to learn zoning as much as I can. But there were two situations that arose and I have some concerns over how they were handled. I'm not sure where to go with that. The first one being a situation where a property was to be divided. And forgive me, I don't have the exact address of the property, but there was a cemetery and there was questions about the egress to the cemetery. And it's my understanding that there were BZA members who knew about the cemetery and knew about the egress, but did not present that information at the first meeting. And it was tabled and cost the township quite a bit of money to keep re-discussing and reposting and revisiting this topic when it could have pretty much been handled in one meeting had the BZA members with knowledge come forward. So I don't know where we can go with that or what we can do with that, but we have a BZA member, if not more than one, that cost us a significant amount of money and withheld information that they knowingly had. How do we address that?
Who are you speaking to?
Whomever wants to answer. If you have an answer, Taylor, I'm happy-
I don't, I don't have the answer, but I'd like to know who's talking.
Oh, this is Mindy, Mindy Wynn.
Okay, I didn't know who it was.
Yeah, my apologies.
This is, this is David. That didn't come up in the first meeting. You'll have to ask someone else whether it could have been resolved in the first meeting, I'm doubtful because of the footage on the drive as it was surveyed. Other than that, you're going to have to get an answer from somebody else.
This is Mike Brown, can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm also a BZA member. I'm agreeing with David, it was not brought up to our attention. I don't think the BZA member that you're talking about is currently in this meeting, but I was not aware of that situation either, or I would have said something at the time.
Okay, well, I mean, and the situation, like I said, is we apparently have a member who not only knew about the cemetery, knew about the Greek egress, but supposedly had family at that cemetery. And our township is not in a fiscal position to keep throwing money out for repeated situations that could have been avoided through the first time. I don't know, you know, Miss, if you have any suggestions or where to go with this other than situations like this you know, probably require more investigation or follow-up to ask or find out from potential members who volunteer after the second or third meeting, why was this not brought up earlier on? I think there needs to be some accountability for things like this.
So that-
This is David. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Mr. Saylor, go ahead with what you were going to say.
Well, as I started to say, just for clearance and my own attitude, being on the BZA board for a long time, my, for what little I get paid, I would dang sure like to have the meeting just once and done with. Because time you go look at a property and time you have three or four meetings, I don't care what you get paid, it's literally nothing. And I don't like that over and over either.
Okay, well, I think my concern is that there's no accountability for members who are putting the township in an uncomfortable situation financially. And I think we need to figure out, maybe not now or at some point, but we need to figure out how members are going to be held to a higher standard and accountability for the actions.
Well, and I would also say, I have concerns, but it was more along the lines of the township itself didn't provide to the BZA that there was a cemetery on that property. That to me is a greater concern because you're asking for people to recall something, but ultimately it's the township's responsibility to document where the cemeteries are and where that egress is necessary.
And should the zoning person not-
All I'm saying is that I think going into the meeting that there was information that we should have had, that we either didn't have or we didn't present. It's neither here nor there.
Right.
And the fact that this happened, I think it's a learning experience all the way around. Mr. Saylor, and I know probably the other BZA members, shared his sentiment on not wanting to have multiple meetings. And this is one of those instances that if I ask if that cemetery is currently documented by the township in any way, shape, or form, do you have anything written down? Even after this BZA meeting that says the cemetery is there?
It's private.
Understand, but still that it's there. Because there's a number of those in the township, correct?
Do private cemeteries need to be documented?
Not for the township purposes, no.
So I have a concern, and I guess I'm trying to jump forward here. When you said it's a learning experience, which I understand what you're saying. So when they were talking about the carport and Kate, you know, of course I'm jumping ahead here with the carport, that was a learning experience.
It was.
So we can't, to me, listening to, in on this, the BZA, they want to find the person, make the person tear down. That was a learning experience.
That, they were going through the process and, you know, to that end, the conversation turned to the point where Kate let them know that she talked and they know.
Yes.
And she's already gone through some of these steps. That wasn't on the front end of the conversation?
Right.
There again, it's a learning experience. This is, you know, I don't, I was in the meeting just like you were. I listened to the recording today to be fair.
Yes.
In those two cases, I don't think that there was anything malicious.
Yeah.
I think it was the process fleshing itself out.
Right.
Kate was trying to basically jump on a grenade
Right.
with the carport, and she didn't need to.
No.
But she was trying to, and the BZA actually kind of pulled her up often and said, let's, let's follow this and have a conversation on it.
But in my eyes, that just needs to be dropped because the gentleman brought in the paperwork, it said carport, that's what this person went with. She admitted to it and everything else, so.
Right, and I remember when that happened, they actually said it was bought as a carport.
Yes.
And so there again, I don't, maybe it's my nature.
Right.
But in that case, I didn't infer malice on what they were trying to do. They bought a carport, our port was established, and it didn't fit the township's definition. And nowhere on there did it say, oh, I have two sides.
Right.
Four, four sides, every side. And it's something that, and Kate went the extra mile with that to talk with other townships about what they would do. And to me, the one thing that stood out was, you know, hey, make a big difference in the permit cost. They wanted, they said carport, it's not a carport. I think she said it was a $60 difference for what they had actually built. And that was after talking to Harrison Township. I thought that was a viable solution too, but at this point, not my call.
Right.
Just my opinion.
Exactly.
So my concern, and I've said this a few times to the other trustees in other meetings, is that as a township, I think we can do better with documenting what we have within our township.
Yes.
It was unfortunate that that happened that way. It was also unfortunate that it wasn't brought up until the end of that meeting. It could have been brought up at the beginning of that meeting, but it wasn't. And that ended up creating and having to be carried over to the second meeting. And there again, I'm not pointing fingers, I'm saying what happened in that meeting caused a second meeting to be necessary. Actually, I think it was the third meeting necessary.
Well, and that, and Mr. Saylor was the one who brought that to their attention.
Right.
And my understanding is Mr. Warble lives right behind the cemetery. That's my understanding.
Yeah.
I may be wrong.
I know he lives in here.
Okay, yeah.
So.
I think that's what you're saying, Mindy, is it wasn't brought to their attention.
Correct, it was not brought to their attention. And the BZA member knew about it.
Right.
And after we had to revisit, revisit, repost, put the ad in the paper, all of the legwork more than once, I believe twice, had that person, and you said it was Mr. Warble, whomever, spoken up the first time, then it would have saved the township money and-
Or I guess Mr. Brunk could have too, because he was aware of the cemetery.
Okay, well, it would have saved the township money and time. And how do we hold our BZA members accountable when they withhold information or when things like this occur?
Right.
Right. We have no standards of accountability. And I think, I don't know how to go about that, but I think that's something we need to potentially look into.
I mean, to that extent, I mean, if you want to assess the need for me, right? Let's say something wasn't seen through in a previous meeting and requires an additional meeting down the road, doesn't have to be the next one. I don't see a problem with the trustees being involved in the review of why that generated a second meeting
Right.
and figuring out, you know, at the end of the day, and I'm not going to speak for anybody on the BZA that's on this meeting, I want to hear from you when I make this statement. Mr. Saylor had stated that they get-
Yes.
Okay?
Yes.
If a meeting, because they get $20 per meeting.
Right.
Right. If a second meeting is required for a purpose that the township or the trustees see as being needed for whatever reason, is it fair to waive the fee that the BZA members are paying for the second meeting? And I'm asking here because I honestly, I don't know. But if, if the, if the goal here is saying, we don't have the money. If we have a meeting and needs to be knocked out in that meeting, if it goes to a second meeting, and it may not be to anyone on the BZA's fault, there may be an issue with the survey, there may be issues with the participants, you don't know.
Right.
And that would be assessed on a, on a case-by-case basis by the trustees. And then we work with the BZA and say, look, understand this, this, this happened. Think we need to waive that meeting's pay to offset the cost. It's a possibility, I'm not, in this meeting, I will be very clear, we are not making decisions.
Oh, no.
This is a working session, and these are all conversational topics. So I don't want anyone inferring that I'm saying something that I'm not.
Well, let me jump out of order from what my notes are. One of the other things that, and I want to come back to the BZA thing because I do have another topic I want to question, but one of the other things that I wanted to discuss with, when it comes to community engagement, is I've spoken to several different townships in Ohio, a couple OTA members. I visited a couple places to talk about different committees. We had spoken about, at one time, about possibility of forming committees for community engagement and to give our residents some involvement. We are one of five Ohio townships that I could find, and there may be more, but I could only find five in all that I spoke with. We are one of five that pays our BZA. In most of the townships in Ohio, with the exception of, the only thing that I can find is less than 10 and maybe only five. The zoning commission and the BZA members are all volunteers and do not get paid. Given the situation of the township right now and our financial status, and every penny helps, when we, if we move to some committees, can we make the decision that the BZA becomes a unpaid committee? As is done in other townships? All it would take to do so is a vote on our part. The Ohio Revised Code does not stipulate that they need to be paid. And it, you know, establishes what they do as a committee, but not how they are compensated if at all. So there's nothing anywhere that says they must be paid. So I think that's something that we might want to consider as well. That being said, I can, we can either, you know, chat about that or I can go back to my other question.
Yes. Mr. Brown, Mr. Saylor?
Yes. Yes, sir.
Wanted to get your thoughts on what trustee Lynn was just saying.
Mike, you want to go ahead?
Well, I can start. I, I'm speaking for myself, and I'm not going to speak for anyone else on the board. I consider it a privilege to be sitting on the BZA. And the financial aspect, it is, is not important to me actually at all. It's more important to me to make sure that our township maintains the, the nice, you know, its ability to rein people in that are doing things incorrectly and, you know, make sure that it's for the best good of every, you know, citizen of the township. To me, the $20 is basically insignificant. That's just my personal opinion, but I don't want to speak for anyone else on the committee that may find it different.
Okay, Mr. Saylor, your thoughts?
Yes, I totally agree with Mike. And, and the ones that's been on the BZA for some time, I don't think any of us is doing it for the money. I did it to try to help the township and so forth. And at times I have forfeited the year, whatever it was for the year. I truthfully was planning on doing that this year, but I've got a question for Mrs. Wynn. When you were asking how many BZA members did or did not get paid, did you compare your pay compared to some of the other trustees in the other township?
I did.
I mean, you know.
I, I did, and we have all been involved in giving our payback to the township as deemed fit. Our pay is also, it is set in stone by an Ohio Revised Code based on different things. So, you know, like I said, trustee Hartshorn has been donating his payback. Trustee Mears and I have given percentages back when possible. So, you know, I think everybody is doing what they can to contribute at this point.
Well, I think that's great, I mean, you know, but I agree with Mike. I personally, I don't do it for the money. If I did, I would not mess with it and I'd go get me a job. Even at my age, that's still possible, I know too many people. But it is nice to be in that position, but there may be others on the board that need that, I don't know. You'll have to ask them individually. But Mike is the best answer I've had, and I totally agree with him. I'd like to see things done right. I'd like to see all meetings to go to just one time. But on the other hand, due to the different surveys and different things, surveyors don't always listen, and neither does sometimes the people in the township that's wanting to divide things, they don't always listen. I personally think there is some limitation as to what we can bend because of the fact that if we bend too much, then there's no use in having a zoning commission that has spent years setting that book up, and it's very fair. You know, just like we just had a case of actually the frontage they required was 300 feet, and it wasn't even that, and then they wanted to split it down, the drive down to 23 foot. You know, the zoning commission years ago set that up so that we did have an out if it could come all the way down to 50 foot. But in that particular case, and that ain't what you're referring to, but it is one of the problems that we were in a meeting about.
Well, that-
And in that particular case, there wasn't enough frontage.
Well, that, that case actually is my next question. And as I said, you know, I'm new and I'm still learning as much as I can about zoning, so perhaps you can help me to understand. It's my understanding that the zoning commission makes the rules and the guidelines for zoning, and the BZA upholds or overturns them for the right reasons.
For the right reason, but I think there is a limitation on the right reason. And the reason I say that is, I have been in meetings with the assistant prosecuting attorney, I think she was an assistant. And at that time, they told us that each case, in each case, the BZA guys or people, ladies or men, were in the same position as a judge, and they had to hear the facts and base their decision on each individual case, not on some other case. That's the only thing I'm going by. You just got to use some good judgment, and I think there's, sometimes people are unhappy with that, but I can't change that, I've been unhappy with things down through life that I lived with, and I guess other people the same way.
Well, I guess, I, from what I understand on that situation, the owners of the property, the Miller family, they had already investigated the zoning codes and had already marked out the property with the safety measures in place. Everything met and complied with the certain safeguards and additional conditions that were necessary to be imposed. Is that correct?
I didn't understand.
Can I try you for a second?
Yes.
In my, in my opinion, the, the application shouldn't have been taken in the beginning.
Right.
I'm new to the, I'm new to the BZA, but I know that there's been a lot of turnover in the office, but there are certain guidelines that we are held by, and, you know, under 30 feet of a required 300 feet isn't even close to the stipulations that we need to even look at. I mean, that's more than bending the rule, that's flat breaking the rules. And we're there to enforce the rules that are in the book. No, there's no prejudice on my part either way. But we also had a resident that lived next door-
But we also had a resident that lived next door to that, that property, who came, who voiced his opinion in the meeting, that it completely. Changed his sale of his property back when he wanted to do it, I don't know how many years ago, maybe Rhonda will remember, I know that Tara, I think, was the person who was sitting in the chair at the time. But he had to re redraw the lines of his property that was sold right next door, and he was asking why it's being different for him than it was for the, for the Miller family. And unfortunately, one of the new board members on our, on the BZA had the Tegi's log cabin in mind rather than what the correct address was. And unfortunately, that caused a little bit of a stir during the meeting. But in my personal opinion, we should have a set of guidelines, at least a basic guideline that we look at prior to taking someone's fees. For coming before the BZA, and if it's not even close to meeting the requirements that we're having to look at, then we should turn them down so we're not taking their money for no reason.
Well, and that's, that's pretty much what I was thinking, Mr. Brown, thank you, because I was kind of on that same page. But if they were to meet the safety guidelines. Would conditional usage apply to the BZA's decision?
David, do you want to speak to that?
This is Brad.
Oh, go ahead, Brad.
Oh, hi, Brad.
I'm, I'm kind of coming in late, I apologize. The letter, the email that we got that was, you know. Complaining about the way this thing was handled, I, I agree with and everything that Mike just said too. Kate or Karen is going to have to filter some of this stuff. You know, I'm guessing that plot got split sometime in the past, because like Mike said, it wasn't even close to being split again. And we should have not taken any money for that, it shouldn't have nixed in the bud there at the very beginning. But once it, once it comes to us, we have to make a ruling on it, and. You know. We're always available to answer questions if there's some sort of. Indecision about what can pass and what doesn't on the appeals board. And in my opinion, we should be giving the money back to the Millers for wasting their time.
The zoning administrator cannot make that decision, if someone wants to pay for a variance, they have to take. The application and the money fee, the zoning administrator, I don't believe has that authority to. Deny them. That is up to the resident, if they want to continue.
Well, they can tell them that it's probably not going to pass. Right?
And I guess not the zoning administrator's called to say she cannot. That's the BZA decision, because I, I'm understanding the twenty-three foot of frontage, and I realize that there are guidelines that were set in place. But from what I understand, you know, the leach field is far from there, the drainage was fine, they had already had it zoned out from the county. So the A in the appeals part, the Board of Zoning Appeals, to allow people to override some of those rules. What was the safety concern, or what was the reason that this one couldn't be accepted?
No, it wasn't even close to what it was supposed to be. Just like David said, you know, fifty foot would be like a minimum, we've not, I don't know that we've. You know, they were only going to have twenty-five foot, which probably isn't even big enough to get some farm machinery on.
The question was asked, if there is a minimum written anywhere regarding footage? Or are you speaking more from a common, common sense perspective? Because I guess that's where we get into the subject is, if we want to say the, the BZA sees the all appeals. That's what happened. If we want to say, you know, minimum considered footage. Have the zoning council put that in the document saying fifty feet is the minimum that Perry Township will consider for any lot split? Do it, I would think, now, I don't know how often that council meets, or what it would take to get that in there, because I'm not trying to generate more costs. Right, but, but that's my example, right?
Right, but that's what the Board of Zoning Appeals is supposed to do, if the commission, the zoning commission makes that rule of fifty feet. Then the BZA can decide if this, if each individual situation can have an exemption from that rule. If all of the safety precautions are met and everything is okay.
Right now, it's three hundred feet. So. That's what the zoning, I thought the driveway was fifty feet.
Four hundred feet deep is three hundred feet wide, I think there's twenty wide side, yeah.
And if you have a zoning book, you should go by the zoning book, I mean, I know there's exceptions.
On a case-by-case basis, yes.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to understand.
Back in the zoning administrator, the capability that if everything, you bring something to her, and it's. It meets the zoning requirements in the book, then you do not need to go in front of the BZA.
Right.
If it does not meet, that's why they're going in front of the.
Right, understood, and the BZA then has the opportunity to hear it and say if it does or doesn't meet safety standards. Or if it does or doesn't, it's not prohibitive, and it doesn't violate really anything other than the measurements. It doesn't affect leach fields, it doesn't affect drainage, it doesn't, it has to affect, I, I guess I was under the impression that the county had already surveyed. They had already put markers and already had it tied out with flags and things to show.
I think that was the surveyor had all that flagged, okay, but I think. From what I'm understanding, Miller must have went to the county, and they would accept it. In a couple different variables.
If the BZA granted the variance, the county would have accepted it, it was okay for the county, but it wasn't okay for the township, but I guess that's what I'm confused on is. Why the big, the big difference and the big decision.
So, let me, I'm looking at the survey right now. And I'm trying to make heads and tails of it. It looks like the twenty-three foot frontage was purely for the driveway access, for the property to be set back. What, four hundred and forty feet, I think was what they were saying. So. Opinion of trustee Hartshorn. Gabby out that. Is that the frontage is not for the overall property, the frontage is for the driveway leading back to the property. And I could see that that could be a mitigating circumstance, because the property itself. Is set back a four hundred and forty feet from the road, the driveway is the only frontage. And field entrance, twenty-three feet to building. Oh, is it? Yes, okay. Let's get back to the field. I got you, okay, this is a very tiny diagram. I can't read them myself. So, so that's how, okay, and then, and I think that's where Mr. Pike, Pike was on there, said that he didn't. They, he didn't see how farm machinery can make it back at twenty-three foot wide.
How wide are your roads?
How wide is it before we worked on it?
Roads are sixteen feet, so.
So you can't get farm machinery back twenty-three foot entrance, you can't go beyond a road.
Agreed, so, so that was my point, is that I understood the concerns that were being communicated. I'm not a farmer, so I didn't speak smartly on the right of way the farm machinery takes, right? But I also didn't hear the owner speak up in that regard, and say anything that would have mitigated that, right? And as I'm looking at the diagram here, I mean, it's basically. The, the two point seven two. Is acres is for the house and a small lot, right, basically that's what that is. So, all of that being said, I mean, and, and I'm not, I'm not looking to bust out people here, I'm actually looking like trustee Wynn said, and trustee Mears said. Your partner of the Pines zoning and the BZA boards, how they do business. So, looking at the survey, survey that I believe all of you received in your package prior to the meeting. Other than. The father who owns the property, who would be the one farming the back of the property, having no issue with the twenty-three foot driveway, you get his stuff back there. What was, what was the additional problem with that?
That's what I'm trying to understand.
Because according to this, the frontage is greater than twenty-three feet, frontage for the driveway's twenty-three feet. Right, so it's not the property that's twenty-three feet, it's the approach back to the field and back, right?
And I think I've heard in the past, board members say, we need to say it's close to the zoning text as possible. But if you want to go by the zoning text, then you don't need a warrant, but I think we, you know, a lot of residents do come in front for a variance. Needs to be looked at carefully.
And I guess, and I'm just trying to understand this one case, because this one had me just kind of confused, I'm still on a learning curve. But I'm trying to understand where the. I guess the justification for the decision is coming from. Other than that particular number, when the father was willing to grant. The, the variance and it met with all the safety requirements, it was good enough for Montgomery County. What, other than that number being stuck in our head, which the BZA has the authority to override, as what the A and BZA stand for in the appeal. So, what was the justification for deciding that that was not okay? Was it the safety, was it that it would flood, was it, you know, what, what was it, other than a number? What was the reason for not accepting that?
This is, this is Mike Brown, can I chime in for a second?
Yes, please.
Yeah, and then I want to.
But one of the problems was, is, is it's all good and well while it's both family-owned properties. But what happens if the son decides he wants to sell his property someday, and the new owner isn't quite as lenient with everything that's going on as far as farm equipment, going up the egress? And, you know, coming to and from the fields. I, I think that, you know, being that the, the amount of frontage wasn't even close to what we generally recommend, along with one of the prior residents. You know, bringing it to our attention that he wasn't allowed to do the exact same thing, and it caused him to change his whole plan for selling his property. I think that he ended up telling us that he lost almost eleven acres of farmland for doing that. I mean, I don't think that the BZA can just bend and flex because someone sends an email that they don't like something. And my job is to enforce what's in the book, like Rhonda says, whether I like it or not, and. You know, twenty-five feet, twenty-three feet, whatever the stakes are, isn't even close to the three hundred feet that we're, you know, bound to look at when we're making these decisions. That's why I said at the very first, that, you know, these kind of things, and I heard what Rhonda said, and I agree with her too. You know, maybe we should have a cheat sheet that we can look at that says, you know, the BZA is willing to flex, but they're not willing to break. And that's just my opinion on the situation.
Can I chime in?
Yes, please.
Okay, you know, the zoning commission set that up, three hundred feet, then they broke it down, if it was. Less than three acres, they could go to two hundred and twenty-five feet, I think I'm right on that. Anyway, then come along. Cases where farmers were breaking off frontage lots to sell to people. But then they had a land back there, and they had to retain so much. The zoning commission decided, well, they would break it down farther, and we could allow, as a BZA, but we could allow fifty foot. Right away from a property, and that's where we have been, and I've been here, I don't know, you could check the records, for fifteen, sixteen years, I don't know. It's been a long time. But at least that has been the guideline. And. I realized, you guys are the boss, and I was taught to be obedient to those in power over me. If I didn't like that power, I had to make some changes. On the other hand. I think at some point, there's got to be how, a limit. As to how far we can break down, but that also starts back in the BZA or in the zoning office. When the Millers came in there to get that, they should have been told, when the first, first survey was shown, that smaller footage, they should have been told. Normally, the BZA board don't go below the fifty foot. And they would have had the option of either, okay, we'll file the appeal and pay the price, or we'll not do it. I mean, you know, it ain't all the BZA's fault. There's got to be some restriction somewhere.
Right, so.
I don't mean to imply that there is fault by any means, I'm on a learning curve here, and, you know, as you say, you know. We're the boss, well, really, I feel that in these situations, we all have our rules. I do what I do, and you do what you do, and I trust you to know what you're doing, and I'd like to learn from that. This is all very new to me, so that's why I'm trying to understand how we reached the decisions that we did. Because I'm seeing it from a different way, but I do appreciate you presenting that perspective and letting me learn. Why we're going with the way that you went, but at this stage, your guys, your decision is what's final. So, in that case, you know, it doesn't matter who's in charge, you guys aren't the authorities.
So, listening in on the BZA meeting, I was a student, I was taking everything in and kind of listening to the conversation. I did not have the packet in front of me. That would have probably helped me understand stuff that are coming in to this meeting, but I'm good, I catch up to speed really quick. And I think part of this was a bit of confusion, that the issue wasn't with the property that was being split off. That's fine, it's the remaining property that only had the twenty-three foot right of way, which is not how that was framed. From my understanding during that meeting, I kept hearing that the property that was being split off had a twenty-three foot frontage. It's not accurate, the remaining property would have twenty-three foot frontage. Also. And I, I've been studying the zoning text, because there again, I got to do my due diligence to come prepared. I didn't go the fifty foot right of way, if that would have been known, and that could have been conveyed to Mr. Miller, Mr. and Mrs. Miller. And they could have adjusted their survey and taken into account a fifty feet right of way. I don't know, that's my follow-up question here, is, that's the first time I had heard that? That makes all the sense in the world, if that's what it is, but is that in the zoning text, Mr. Saylor?
Pardon?
The fifty foot right of way being required, is, is that in the zoning text anywhere, or is that just something that's been learned over time?
It's, it states that the BZA board, in certain situations. Can allow a fifty foot driveway. Back to a property. It doesn't say they can't go less, it doesn't say they can't go more. That I know of, and that I remember. I don't have the book here in front of me, but that's not hard to find.
Right, and, and I'll look for that, I was just asking if you could off the top, so is that fifty yard, fifty foot deep or fifty foot wide, does it, does it make that specification?
Well. The problem with the Miller situation was, if we made, if he made that. Even larger than the, the land he wanted to cut off for his son would have been too narrow to meet the requirements of the. Two acre or three acre, whatever it is.
But that would have changed the merits of the appeal.
That would have changed the dimensions of both, there just wasn't enough frontage there to make the ju, a juggle, or I'm sure. The ever member on that BZA board would have went for it. There, that also is another situation, I heard you guys vaguely talking in the background, but about the. Supposed carport that was built up on Westbrook Road, and yet it was misrepresented when it brought in. Technically, if the zoning administrator had a went by the book, it plainly says, no carports or garage. In front of the back line of the house. And yet she issued the permit, so technically that part is wrong, but they lied to her to get that.
Now, I do know that when they brought that up, that they, they had provided a diagram showing the leach field is prohibited at being behind the back edge of the house. There's a dip in the property and a leach field, so I do remember that, because as soon as this happened, I think all of us trustees were talking about it. And Kate was trying to keep us informed to make sure that we were ready for anything that came along. So, yeah, it, it, at this point in time, it's really hard to look back. So, yeah, it, it, at this point in time, it's really hard to look backwards and point a finger, because when you point a finger, we're pointing back. Right, so.
You're right.
And, and from what I know, I did see the, uh, invoice, and it did say carport.
Yep.
And that's what they bought, that's what they permitted, and that's what they built. It just didn't fit our definition and I don't think at any point we asked, does it only have two sides? Which is where we were getting back to that being a part of the learning process.
I don't think it's exactly in front of the house. It's kind of like seven inches.
Right, right. It, it, it's up to, up to.
Yes.
Right, so, and in that case, and I actually brought this up to Rhonda, and I may have brought up to our trustees, is that there is some of the text, in the zoning text, that needs to be reviewed and updated.
Yes.
To current definitions. Like Mr. Saylor said, we have a great text. Trust me, it never fails to do its job and put me to sleep most nights. But in all seriousness, it's a great text. I've learned a lot from it, but there are a number of definitions in there that don't meet the current definitions of the standard.
And I think that might be what has been confusing as I've been reading it, because I've spent a lot of time trying to read zoning and research in the past couple of weeks. And some of it just doesn't seem to make sense. And that's why I'm in the position I'm in and trying to understand and asking, you know, for, with the BZA members to help me understand, help me learn because I think we do have some very antiquated language in our zoning texts.
And so, and there again, I know that will incur costs possibly for the zoning commission to get together and to kind of go through that. We're not saying that. We're saying that that's something we may want to talk to about moving into the future because, learning opportunities happen all the time. And this showed us, uh, somewhere in the zoning text that we were lacking. Like definition of what was in the text versus what was purchased and asked to be built. And that's no one's fault, to me. That's, both sides were following the process. And at the end of the day, when all of a sudden done, it didn't meet our definition of carport. And now we're trying to figure out who's to blame. I don't think anyone's to blame, but I think that Kate has outlined some good steps towards remediation that are viable. And, uh, I know the BZA will be meeting with, uh, I think they asked to meet with Nathaniel and to go, Kate was sending them some emails and some other stuff to get them up to speed on everything that had happened at that point before they moved forward. So I, I, I trust that that will continue to go down the right path. Um, I did want to circle back to one thing really quick. Uh, Mr. Rorwell, I know you dialed in late. When we were talking about, um, how our township is one of five that, uh, trustee Wynn found that actually pays their BZA members. And Mr. Saylor and Mr. Brown both stated that they would have a problem with, uh, not being paid in that position, and I wanted to get your thoughts.
Yeah, I, I've already, uh, I let Rhonda know, uh, I think it was when she sent out a, a thank you for Michael, that he has never accepted any monies. I told her to go ahead and next mine too, so I haven't, I'm not being paid. I do have a question here. It's a little side note here. This meeting seems to be a lot about BZA. Rhonda, did you send out notices to the BZA members so they could be part of this besides me?
It was publicized. It was put on the Perry Township Facebook page, but no, I did not, I don't have the BZA.
I mean, it's not specifically about the BZA. That's one of the several topics that we're covering and it was listed under topics to be covered on the public posting and the door and the information.
And, and to be fair, the trustees, mostly, I think me and trustee Wynn came up with the topics. And I wrote up the notice. And I will say that while we didn't notify the BZA because we were talking about it more from a trustee township perspective, we more than appreciate the attendance of three BZA members to help us talk through what's happened, what we're learning from it and how we're moving forward. So I appreciate that and I, I sure, hopefully I speak for the rest of the trustees in that regard.
My, my request for BZA review, and I don't even know if review is the word I came up with, was, um, okay, thank you. Was for me, not necessarily to talk about the BZA, but to help me learn and understand why the decisions were made that they were. Which I think, I think that has been accomplished today.
I, I agree. I agree, but if it would be helpful to have the BZA members all present and to notify them in some way, or none of this conversation would have taken place.
Agreed and noted. That, that was a, uh, an oversight and, uh, moving forward, definitely want to have the people that can shine light onto the logic or processes applied to, uh, help inform us in these kinds of cases.
Truth be known, I was sitting in the office when Mr. Saylor had called about the meeting, so I just figured he was the president of the BZA, he wouldn't be able to answer any questions I had. So I didn't necessarily look into, you know, no, thinking it was necessary to notify or anything, because again, it wasn't about the BZA. It was more about helping me understand the decisions.
Yeah, actually, Michael's the president of the BZA.
Oh, sorry. I thought it was actually the same with BZA.
No, Michael is.
Michael London is the chairman.
See, I got a lot of her to do.
It's not a president or vice president. Okay, there's so many people. Not for BZA.
Still learning. I apologize.
Can I cut in?
Yes, sir.
Oh, this is David. First, is Rhonda online?
Yes, yes, David.
Oh, Rhonda, I don't have to wait till the end of the year. Go ahead and just plan in 2020. I get no pay. I don't do it for the money. And she will tell you guys later, I really do it for the naps I get to take on my front porch. She come and caught me one day. Anyway. Anyway, now, Ms. Wynn, I'm not, uh, giving you any hard time. I don't mean to. And I will be happy at any time to sit down with you guys. We can, we can separate if we limit the numbers to the BZA and one or two more. But we need to sit down. We can put our mask on. We can sit and talk sometime in the future. This thing's got to let up. And I would be happy to help at any time. And if anyone's got a question, I don't know all the answers, but we will find out. If it's in the book, we'll find it.
I would love that.
Other than that, I thoroughly appreciate getting us sat in on the meeting and I'm done for the day. Um, you guys, uh, be blessed and, uh, one thing I will say, anything I do in my life, in this township, in this state, whatever, is the fact I try to be honest about what I do. And what I do do, I'll live up to. Other than that, I wish you all a good day.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
This is Mike. I'd like to pop in real quick. Um, Rhonda, you can go ahead and, and take me off the pay slot also. Uh, I didn't know that was an option or I would have, uh, opted for it earlier, but I don't consider this a, a position that I need to be paid for. I'm doing it out of community service and, and trying to make things right for every resident in Perry Township, so you can go ahead and strike my name off that.
Mr. Brown, me, myself, and I think everybody else here, we appreciate you and Mr. Saylor, and I know Mr. Rorwell has done that. Um, but we would like to thank you for doing that.
Thanks, you're welcome. Thank you.
And Michael London, he has donated his pay since I've been F O from Delta and A. He's.
Yeah, we've mentioned that before. And that's awesome. It's.
I guess we, I need to get with David Specter and question him.
Yeah, what he wants to do, you know. And honestly, maybe we leave that to the BZA, talk to the other members, not on the phone. And, uh, let them know what you guys have said and, and see what the feeling is. I agree with the one other member that's not on. It says Mr. London. So, and then just get back with us, let us know if this is something that's unanimous or, and it doesn't have to be. I don't want, I don't want to make it sound that way. I just want to give every member the opportunity to make a decision on their own.
Do you want to revisit the cemetery situation while Brad's on the phone, or would you like the BZA members to go ahead and leave the meeting?
Oh, you don't have to leave the meeting. You can stay on as long as you like.
Okay.
And I've got the answers I was looking for. It was more just kind of a voice of concern than, you know, chalk it up to experience.
And I think just going forward, whenever there's a BZA case, just gather as much information as possible. Make sure you study what is mailed to you when you pick up at the office.
And maybe ask flat out, is anyone familiar with this property?
And, and I, I would like to see in the future that we get digitized copies, uh, wherever it's being sent out. It's easier to distribute stuff without having to pay the mail charges.
Yes.
And it would definitely make it easier for me because I know, I think all the trustees have stated that they, they have an interest in, auditing the BZA meetings to get smarter and be aware of the happenings in the township. And if there's anyone on the BZA that is not able to receive physical copies, it's not a problem. But if we can cut down the amount of physical copies that we're mailing out, once again, I'm not trying to be a penny pincher, but every little bit helps.
And they, if, if so, I mean, you know, that's just like when we, when we come down to Sun Chicks and stuff.
Yeah.
There's possibility that they can run down and pick up their package. They can be on the back counter.
Yes.
Like me, and I like to see things on paper where I can.
Or perhaps go as a group or carpool to look at properties.
I'll change your overstep from the sunshine water. Do they have to be individual?
It has to be less than a quorum.
See, that way they could only have to pick up one packet among two.
You could go with two.
So if you guys have email addresses or, hell, I'm sorry. If you would like a Perry Township email account, I can set you up with one as well as a BZA group email that sends stuff to all the BZA members. So this is a new occurrence here in the township. Actually, we're talking about that first in this meeting. Um, we have to, really need to create unlimited email addresses. So if that's something that any of the members would be interested in, let us know.
I think that's a wise idea. I mean, I, myself, I could swing by and pick up the information from the BZA or from the township office. But having it emailed to me would be just, just as, you know, appropriate, I think. There's no, I don't see a need for me to have to have things mailed when I can, I live two miles away from the office and I can swing by and pick it up.
Well, if I get an email, I would rather come pick it up because I personally like hard copies to look at, but, uh,
That's fine. I was going to say, when they come.
You know, that would be my preference, but I'd be glad to, to swing by and get it because I'm usually out anyway.
Or it may even be possible for the Sunday.
Yeah, I thought, you know, turn it out to the zoning members, because when somebody, for me, for your, um, then I think you need the package information to discuss or enable them to. Yeah, but I think the township still.
If they like hard copies, it's not a problem. Um, we're just looking at options that can help us and will help the township and help them, uh, do the job and do the task, so.
Okay, so anything else on this? Okay, and then I guess next on our list is what to do with Kier's money. Is Wynn?
Well, we didn't talk about the committee.
Oh, I thought we did.
No, the committee is, um, I have talked to a couple of different townships that have committees. And I know a lot of people in the community were talking about that some time ago. I would like to create a couple of committees in the township. One of my ideas was a cemetery committee for people to go in and clean up the cemeteries and help alleviate some of the time that our road crew has to do there. Or a community committee to plant flowers and lay a place. One, one township has a, um, senior citizen corps where people just check on their senior citizens all the time or go visit them. But just, I'd like to come up with ideas and I'd like you guys to help me come up with ideas for groups of things that people can do to volunteer in the township. So that more residents can be more involved.
Have you had residents express that they want to be involved?
What's that?
Has residents expressed that they would like to be involved?
And I've had quite a few people, and before I became a candidate, I had discussed it with several different people. I was like, well, if I decide to run for office, that's one of the things I could think of doing. And then when I was campaigning, I said, that's one of the ideas I'd like to bring to fruition. And now I've been here six months and folks are like, well, are you done? So, well, I've been waiting, but I, I don't know that this is any time, you know, no time's better than the present, give or take, to start looking at options for what committees are. We had talked about T-shirts at one time. And I would like to, you know, decide if we do or don't want to do that. If we do, to maybe put together, originally I wanted to put together a bicentennial committee, but yay COVID, that kind of went by the wayside. But I'd like to still hold a contest for people to design a logo and then have people do something to commemorate our 200th anniversary because I hate to see that just go away unrecognized.
And we could postpone that. I mean, I've seen a lot of places around the country that are postponing major milestones for towns.
Oh, yeah.
And stuff like that, so.
We could postpone the car show.
Next year's not our question. I mean, we just have a heavy belated bicentennial.
Well, we can still do T-shirts without coming into contact.
Right, and, and you know, that, this is something that trustee Wynn and I did talk about when we were campaigning. I was kind of coming at it from a slightly different angle, same reason. I'm a big believer in crowdsourcing, right? We don't have money to pay a digital artist. But if there's people in the township who want to give a crack at coming up with Perry Township's new social media seal, right? Because I've got it currently as scanned copy and I think it came from one of Mike's truck stickers once upon a time. Which is fine, but I'm saying if, if people want to do it, you know, and there's an interest there, then by all means, that's something we should do because it doesn't cost us anything and we're getting engagement with the community. The other thing is, you know, I was looking at, uh, people may not know this, uh, Township does have an Instagram account. I created one because, not that I'm lazy, but I want to see Perry Township do the resident size, right? When I was running for trustee and I was going door to door and I was talking to people, one of the first ones I asked them is, what does Perry Township mean to you? Because that's, that's something I needed to know, because that's important. That sets my context for how I'm going to think, what I'm going to do and how I'm going to act. And I, as I was kind of pulling that thread, I started thinking, wow, if people could actually take a picture of, well, they think of Perry Township, what does that mean to them? And all they have to do is upload it to Instagram to the hashtag, uh, PTNCOH. And it comes to our Instagram feed and then that can be linked to all of our social media. It makes it easier to develop content. It makes it easier to show what Perry Township is and what it means to the residents. If someone's looking to buy a house in Perry Township, most people nowadays, they're going to go to Google. They're going to Google Perry Township and they're going to start looking through stuff. And the more that we have out there, the, the better it's going to be. And so from a committee perspective, I was thinking more of just crowdsourcing than committees. But I also thought of committees as it pertained to doing, you know, public outreach or events or stuff like that too, so. I think we have a lot of opportunities. Trustee Wynn had reached out to the prosecutor's office to ask, uh, Mother Maywe, and it was said that you can, um, as long as they're not a governing body, they make no decisions and they present everything to the township trustees who end up making a decision. Which is, I think, what we all think of when we think of a committee, not someone who can laterally act, but someone who brings something to the table for, uh, a broader discussion. And I'm important with that. I, I think that's a great idea. I think it's one that we need to, uh, walk a little bit further down the road and actually get into in a formal board of trustees meeting. But I, I am curious if, if anyone else, Rhonda, missing, if you guys have thoughts on, uh, on that kind of activity for the township.
Yeah, I spoke to Liberty Township, um, Washington Township that's in Dublin, Ohio, not our Washington Township, Westchester Township, Ohio Township, Bethel Township and German Township. And got their input on how they did some of their, or their volunteers, how they got started. And they said, somebody just suggested it and it happened. Okay, so, um, there's no real provisions for committees in the ORC. There's no guidelines. And when I check in this annual, as long as there's no fiduciary responsibility and no legislation involved, that they're just volunteers doing things, then I can make a resolution if that's what we prefer to create committees. then I can make a resolution if that's what we prefer to create committees.
But not today.
Uh?
But not today.
No, not today. Not today. No, no, no. I'm saying in the future. No, this is.
I know, I know.
Not today. But if that's how we want to go with it, or we can bring it up and just discuss it at a meeting.
So I'll, I'll just ask if, if anyone thinks that it would be a smart idea to, to craft up a post for the township Facebook and.
Just ask if we would be interested.
Just ask if people, if people have interest, if they think that there's a committee that they'd have an interest in participating.
And let them suggest.
And let them suggest it back to us. That would not say go forth and make committees. We're saying, you know, if, if someone from the township says, I'd really like to work on, you know, I'd like to set a committee for beautification. And identifying opportunities to beautify the township or do whatever else. And they can drum up an interest to it, then by all means, come propose it to the board of trustees and, and, you know, we can make it happen. I, I, I'd like to see that when it comes to committees, actually having the, the residents bring it to us and tell us what they want to see and what they want to participate in.
Yeah, I'm all in favor of that.
I think if they do that, then, then, you know, then a resolution kind of makes itself that we can, you know, they basically lay it down on the table for us. We look across the table, we all think it's a good idea, we put a resolution out, everybody goes forward.
And Mike, how do you feel about the cemetery committee? Because that seems to be one of the popular ones in a lot of the townships where people volunteer to go in and clean up, sometimes mow.
We had so many of those.
Yeah.
Both. So no mowing.
You got tombstones.
You got tombstones.
Ours cleaning up, uh, you gotta watch what you pick up with ours powder wise. You pick somebody's flowers off, you're going to get chewed, chewed on. So then rain costs about 40 bucks.
Yeah.
We've done that before and I, I chewed that before and before. So we, we do try to clean up the old ones or dilapidated ones. But as far as cleaning up, um.
But you don't.
Sticks in, you know, sticks in the springtime or. Storming out like that.
I'm not necessarily pushing for that one because I, to trip me on, I know very little about cemeteries.
But I mean, that probably clean up is, it would be like that storm or something like that. Other than that, for week to week basis, we're in through there every week, you know, picking up any dilapidated flowers or flowers that blow off.
I was gonna say, you guys don't remove flowers.
We do not remove flowers. No. Usually in our cemetery, mostly the residents or the people who own it take care of it. Bring, spring flowers in, replace the winter flowers and so forth. You may pick them up a lot of times. If they are on the ground, we'll pick them up because you're not there to put somebody's flower on the stove.
But if they're in the tree line or fence line, then you can pick them up.
It's further. You got lots of you.
And, and there, I think it's more about framing the constraints of what that would be.
Yes.
Right? And, and if that's something that's a little bit based on how our cemeteries are.
Right.
We've already got someone who mows, we've already got people to come through and clean it up. And if, if, you know, the road crew that does the cemeteries, if they say, you know, it's not encumbrance to do it. Or maybe it is. If it's an encumbrance, that's something that makes sense for a committee or a group, then by all means, but, um, that would definitely be part of the conversation.
How about the administration building that's a lot of that?
Exactly.
We have some prickly weeds out.
How about the man and the.
They hurt my fingers.
Woman knows something.
Yeah.
The ditches.
And, and. And I do know that some of the townships do what they call a call to action, saying, hey, we're going to be out so and so doing road acts. And if you want to show up, there'll be bags, there'll be this and that. But it's, that's about as organized as it gets.
Yes.
Because it's a liability thing if you're, you're telling people to go.
Right.
But, but if you say there's going to be bags out there, I like working with ODOT, they'll put out bags and you can sign or whatever. But, you know, stuff like that, I, I know that, I think Mike was telling me last year, somebody was doing a cleanup down one of the roads and they found tires and they found, I mean, there's all sorts of stuff down some of the roads. And to me, I mean, if a resident, if the residents are willing to do stuff like that, I know I am, I'm always looking for stuff to do outside. And the flowers are definitely on my list. I, I didn't ignore that email. That's something I've been building towards. It hasn't been.
Mike's.
Yeah.
I did some weeks ago and they were.
So.
We were talking about the thistles. Is that what they were? I don't know. There were weeds in the flowers. There were prickly weeds.
So I, I, I think we're, we're at a good point then with the committee engagement. We'll, we'll see how that develops and we'll, we'll craft something. We'll, we'll, uh, bounce emails off abroad to, to see if there's a common thought thread for how to frame something to put on a Facebook page. And then we'll, we'll just do that. We don't need a decision to do it. It's just community outreach, that's all.
And a lot of the townships, uh, Liberty Townships is kind of the one I like the best, but on their webpage, they have applications for volunteers. And then they choose the committee that they want to participate in. And then there's kind of a release of indemnity or something at the bottom saying, you know, we don't hold the township responsible for anything that takes place while we're volunteering. We can look at something like that, the legal jargon of it.
Yeah. Ask the manual about how to eliminate.
Exactly.
Or eliminate liability for any volunteer opportunity.
Yeah. And CARES money, I had, was, when, I, I had seen something on television also about that being released. And I was just, I know we were kind of questioning what to do with it or how to justify it. If, if I understand correctly, and I just, I put it on there so we can all talk about it at the same place at the same time because I just wanted to know.
Well, I know Brookville or Echus, they placed 9,000, but they have, they're redoing the building.
Right.
So they're putting the glass up and a new door and all that so that, that they can justify it. My understanding is you have to justify everything you send it on, right? I just don't see the need. I don't, we have enough.
I listened, I, I filed in to WebEx that they had for the, for OTRMA talking through the CARES Act and what it means. And the, the one thing that they said is that if you don't know if you're going to spend it, request it because you can always pay it back. I'm not, I'm not saying we need to do that.
Yes.
I'm saying for, for townships or municipalities that think they are going to need it, request it. Don't hesitate. For townships that don't have that cost, don't do it. Because it's more, it would be more hassle to go through the process and then have to follow the process to give it back. It's not worth it. Um, and I know our township, uh, the police have been able to operate on their budget.
And OTRMA gave us $500, so we've been using that.
Right. So we don't have any pending or outstanding costs or costs that have been paid
Yeah.
in response, or that would fall on the CARES Act at this time.
Do we have any money left in that? From years from that, or from the $500?
Oh, we have almost all of it still. Yes.
Yes. And we're lucky we have, we already have tax last set up. We have a, a lot of stuff that, uh, had us set up for this.
Right.
And so, um, so at this time, I, after watching that, I was like, I think there's other people that need it.
Yeah.
We don't need it. And I, I wanted to see what everybody else thought, but it's, you know, it's one of those things where that's just not expensive to have.
No. And if we need to, I mean, if we've got the money, we can buy a five gallon jack and put it up their own thing and order here or there.
Right.
And I didn't know if you wanted to put like the dispensers at the door so if somebody come in, they get, you know, disaffected. I didn't know if this crew was going to stay around, whether they wanted to buy a hoger.
Right.
A hog building and materials. Didn't know whether costly, you know, masks, the gloves.
Well, the police, I've checked with the police department. They don't wear the mask for gloves. And if there's an ambulance call, they don't go inside there. So, yeah.
I didn't know about that. I mean, just back there.
Right. I, I wouldn't be opposed, I wouldn't be opposed to a dispenser or two, right? And I know that there's places within township that are developing those and providing those to a number of municipalities. So if that's, I mean, outside of this meeting, if that's something that we would want to pursue, I, I think that would be great. And it would fall well within the $500.
Exactly.
So, you know, that's, you know, if, if there's nothing.
Someone within the township would be able to.
It's very, it's very possible. Very possible. So was there anything else on the CARES Act or? Okay. Cause I think I'm ready now to show you guys.
Oh, thanks.
I mean, prepare myself for close proximity.
We need a password to get in or not?
You will, yeah. I've got, I'll, I'll give that to you. So.
Oh, and back to the CARES Act money, I would say something to Chief Littleton, that he's, unless he comes up with something, I don't want to do.
Okay. So this is, this is the current draft of the website. It's very simple, right? It's got the seal over here, the name of our township. And then I've got, we, basically on the planet we're on, we can have two webpages that can develop this way. So we created one for the township and one for the cemetery. Just, just off the cuff. And then I've got links to the police department and then there's also links to the 2020 census, Ohio's COVID-19 site and the data convention because they were also distributing a lot of data about COVID-19. Um, we can add more links if we want to. That's fine. On this block, I basically just put a word about what is Perry Township. This can use word. I, you know, if people have content or thoughts that they would like to see here, I'm open to it. Um, I haven't really gone the creative path with this content yet. I'm just kind of stubbing it out. And then we have the elected officials. I have each of our pictures. And it also shows our email address underneath our pictures. People want to reach out to us. And there's a block here to put a couple of sentences about you if you want to. It's grayed out right now. It wouldn't be if I did it, but. That doesn't have to be there.
Okay.
That's just part of how that block is stubbed out, right? So coming down here, we have upcoming meetings. Oh, jumped on you. Sorry about that. So for the upcoming meetings, what I did is I took like a six month chart, right? So like the June 9th meeting and on. And what I have is I've got the meet, you know, basically when the meeting happens, the date, and then I have agenda slash minutes slash report, right? For the recording, I link it to the YouTube upload that I did of the Zoom meeting currently. I'm going to be getting the started at Hessler when he gets back from vacation because as I was going through all the recordings that we had, there's some work we have to do there to kind of snug that up a little bit. And I might be asking him about the possibility of pouring the meeting room off of their PC and putting it on a separate PC. So that it doesn't get, I know. So, I mean, this is part of the conversation that I might have with him about options. Because I did research the app that they use for the CARES runs to see what's possible with the app. And I also know what they will do because of what they pondered.
Right.
And that may say that if we want to do X, here's the options for doing it, or we just can't do it.
Because I know the uses for it.
Yes. So, um, so basically, and then I have a BZI one, which I already put the record, linked in the recording for the BZI. Um, one of my go-dos is to get copies of, once the minutes are signed off, I want to scan those in and then I want to provide those as a link. Because to me, I think the more stuff that we make available, less stuff we may be asked for. And that way people are proactively doing. So I did that with the trustee meetings and the BZIs. I also have a listing for, uh, board trustees' special meetings. This is a default template. I haven't put in special meetings yet. Um, because I think we've only, this one, working sessions by special meeting is the first one. So I'm going to look into that. And then I also have blocks for township special events. If we're going to do an Easter egg hunt, if we're going to do pop with pop, whatever we want to do, we can put on there. And we'll also give a little mouse on Facebook where else can cross them, right? So trying to keep this all very simple. And then there's a contact Perry Township. They can enter their name or email address, the subject and message, and it'll automatically send an email to us. Okay?
To the order?
Well, it, it's set to send it to a order and then I can talk to the reporter that's required, right? So, and then down at the bottom of the page, it's got contact info, address. And then I put offices of Perry Township. That's the order to you and Karen. And I can add her. So that's the initial page as it currently stands. The other page is cemetery page.
From what I understand, correct me if I'm wrong, please, our cemetery records are a hot mess.
No.
No? Okay.
Mine aren't. Maybe that computer is mine aren't.
Well, okay. So if we want to fix the records that are on the computer, you can help us get that all straight.
Yeah, because I got a book and I can write everything in book.
Okay. Because I was trying to learn that from the information that Kate had. And there's like a lot of folders and a lot of.
Yeah, why there's two, I know when Kate does it for me, I give you a bird permit or a grade, sell grade. She had, she actually had, I guess, the two files for whatever reason that was set up that way. I'll never know.
And they're not the same.
Right.
And that's, so I, I would like, I, I'm willing to put some time into it. I don't know. We need to do that as a group or how to do, but I would like to take whatever information you have and make an accurate one file of like current accurate database.
I don't know if Kate's got one that, I mean, she should have one that's complete. The other one I don't. But one of them should be up there.
She takes the burial permits and compares them with the two files.
Gotcha.
And then it's, so she's correcting them both as she goes. Because she don't know. The 20s.
Right. She has to validate between all the.
Yeah.
So, yeah. So this is the page for the cemeteries. It's basically, it, it lays out townships that are owned and operated by Perry Township under the direction of Ohio Advice Code and Board of Trustees. Um, open dawn to dusk. And then it gets into some of the basic information about burials, process, something like that. You have to have the burial 36 hours in advance. Basically, I took it from the handout that we have in cemeteries, right? Cemetery office, I, actually on the handout, it said cemetery office hours is Monday through Friday, 7:00 AM to 3:30 PM. I didn't know if that was speaking of the road crew or if that's speaking of admin in this office. Right. So I didn't have the context around that, but I figured it lined up with their hours. So I put that on there and then the number, uh, that was also listed on there. And then I said be an email and that was at the cemetery, it's at Perry Township that I created a board for. So, um, then I transcribed by hand the costs that were in the handout that I had. And I think it was last time that that was changed was 2017.
In, you know, January 1, 2020.
2020. It says 2020 on it, yes. Uh, but I'll confirm all these because I may have a, a folder copy. Um, and I just listed everything out. And then I put, you know, the information off to the side, the footers are installed May in October, April 1st is kind of the Memorial Day, September 1st for Labor Day. Different charges may occur at discretion in cemetery section of $200. That's on the documentation that I had.
Because like if you go on a Saturday and then if you have to bring them on, it's later, then that's.
Well, so, so any day after 2:15 is 2:50, but the actual charge is you can get your request.
Well, yeah.
Yes, Marilyn, were you talking?
Okay.
Okay. So over here on the other side.
Unless you're really counting on it, I think you're good.
And then, uh.
Well, I could. I just thought I had leftovers.
Burials on, uh. So no burial or barrels on holiday may incur, or incur a thousand dollar increase. And then I listed the federal holidays as they're defined. And then, uh, government holidays that fall on a Saturday and a Sunday will be observed on a Friday and Monday respectively. So basically I took what I had and tried to transcribe it into here. Then I have blocks for the different cemeteries, okay? This is where I ran into a small wall is because based on the package that we have, I can't load pictures that are bigger than a certain size. And the pictures I took with my Google Pixel are like 5 meg. So if it falls outside the size barrier.
Can you scan them?
Well, that, that would make a barrier. So basically I take them and then it turns them into it. And then I turn them into a JPEG. And I tried to upload them a couple of different ways, compress them and stuff. I couldn't get under that level. Because we basically have an entry level, you know, for a lot of this stuff. So, what I did instead of pictures was I put geolocation maps. It actually shows where it's located, right? People can zoom it out, zoom it in, do whatever they want to do. It's not perfect.
Stupid addresses.
Um, I did not put the address yet.
Right.
Because I basically geolocated, well, actually, yes, I did, because Google is pretty smart. I put in Pleasant Hill Cemetery in Brookville, Ohio, and then it loaded the address and then provided the pin. So, so that's there. So, each one of the cemeteries, now, I know each of the cemeteries has a history to them. I don't have any context or information there. Maybe a couple sentence blurred or a couple paragraph blurred that I can put on each cemetery would be great. So, if we have that written down, I know we have a lot of books in there for the cemeteries.
Whatever family names.
Yeah. So, I've gone through some of those books, but I haven't gone through them with that one. So, I'm gonna look, but if people have stuff that they know or stuff that they think would be good information, I would love to have that. So, that, you know, people can send it to Rhonda or me or whatever. That would be appreciated. So, I did that for the four active cemeteries. Pleasant Hill, Perrymont, Landis, and Eversole, right? So, I haven't put the other cemeteries yet.
Yeah, he hasn't put my cemetery on there.
So, because I've said in the past that I have a map that I got from Brookville, it's worth it. And I have it in a sleeve and I mark on it as I'm driving around to make sure that I go anywhere. I can include the inactive cemeteries, create a subsection of inactive cemeteries and also do the same thing for that. I know there's a number, there's like six or, six or eight of them, I think, the inactive's.
Five.
The five, okay. Um, that we maintain.
And we're going back to where there's private cemeteries, we have no...
Right, and that's, and that's...
We have five.
And that's why I want to make sure that I make it very clear is that these are the township maintained active and inactive cemeteries, so...
Because then, no, anyone, it's not...
McNelly?
McNelly, it's not an act. No, it's been there, buried there quite a while, but we just had a gentleman redo a maintenance zone, yes.
And we're, I guess, silly question maybe, McNelly and Landis are back to that?
No.
No.
Aren't they?
No. McNelly is on heater and Oak Creek.
Yeah, I would, it looks an awful lot like back to Landis, but you're right. I guess Landis does, Landis does that add into someone's property. Landis goes to Oak Creek and there hill. Right. Okay, yeah, 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 yeah.
No, we can at least...
I've driven past both of them, but in my head, it looked like one was back to that, so... Okay. So, yeah, and I can add that, and I think that'll be good, you know? Because as, as we've been talking over the last couple of months, I, I've found that, I'm not the only one in the township that doesn't know where the cemeteries are in the township. And that's, that's great information for people, especially if someone's looking for, they want to buy a lot, then have at it. And here's the contact information and the map to show you where it is. You can go walk through it, check it out, for the inactives, let them know that it's inactive.
And I recently learned that Landis has a Geo Cache in it that's on a national map of Geo Caches.
Landis is made up of five D's.
Right.
We found a acquirer with these a couple years ago on there.
Yes.
They were all two. At the same time.
So, then at the bottom of the page, it just has the contact information and the hours. I took a slightly different look on this page than the other pages. I wanted to see how they felt, right? Because the other one doesn't show the business on, on the footer. This one, the cemetery one does, just for now, because like I said, I'm trying to see what looks a certain way. And this one also shows a map of, the footer shows a map where the trustee, or trustee, the township building is, right?
Yeah, I like that.
I didn't put the maintenance garage on there. But, you know. So, that's basically the website. It's, it's effective. It could definitely use some depth in some areas, and I'm hoping that people can rely on that depth.
One of the things that the other townships does that I like, that we may or may not have enough for, they have a Twitter account and their Twitter feed scrolls on their page, on their main page. Now, that would require us to put in a lot of stuff on the Twitter feed.
Right. So...
I don't know if we have enough to do that.
So, long-term, that's, I mean, social media, you can go as broad as you want to go with it. It really depends on participation. And I had thought about doing Twitter. I just haven't done it yet. Initially, coming out of the gates, I did Facebook, YouTube, and Instagram. And a web page. So, for presence of the township to start getting the ball rolling. And we can expand it as we...
Is there gonna be a page for all the Instagram pictures to automatically upload to?
The thing is, is that if they put in the hashtag for the township, it'll automatically go to township's Instagram. I didn't...
Can you put that on the website?
Not on this website yet.
Okay.
So, this is a tier feature-based website, right? We came in with the entry level because we're looking at like just putting something out there. This is also to give us a feel for, in two years, do we want to talk with an IP and, or similar website developer and say, "Look, we ran this for two years. We have a really good idea of what we like, what we need and what we don't need." And then be able to talk that out with somebody else. So, end game, most definitely. But I think, just for right now, my thought is trying to get the most bang for the buck, acknowledge where our constraints are with the tiering system, and try to operate within those constraints. So, right now, I guess I take this down now. So, that said, is there any questions about what I've showed you? Anybody? Okay. Well, that's all that I wanted to show you guys with the website. If people have questions, including anybody on the phone, they can reach out to me and ask me questions or have a conversation with me. Like I said, I'm trying to make this very clear that while the webpage and social media sites are for the township, it's a reflection of the residents, and I want to make sure that I capture that. So, that's all I have.
Okay. Okay, we, whatever passwords.
I've got those, yeah. I didn't put those on because I've got a list that has everybody's password. And I didn't want to put that and distribute that out, so I'll get with you. Actually, I don't know how I can send somebody's email.
You send it to Rhonda, she'll send everybody else.
So, we'll, we'll do that as best we can. If you have a laptop versus a PC. Maybe you can bring a laptop in during one of our meetings, and I can do it during the opening part of the meeting. And that way, it's not a ding. If it is, I'll get you that, though. She, she put in the email and then she asked me to type in the password. I didn't memorize the passwords. I hadn't written down. But, but yeah, and I'll give you the iMap information, and you can just set it up for an iMap. I know. That's why I'm writing it up. So, so, yeah, there'll be more to come on that. I'm, like, I, like I had mentioned previously, I'm gonna write up everything that I can. If there's something I can do hands-on, I'll put hands-on. And if I can't do it hands-on, I'll write it up so that someone else can. That's all I have.
Okay, sounds great. Anybody else got anything else?
Motion picture?
Second.
When?
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.